Hello and welcome to Watch Party on Politics Social. We'll be going over to the annual county council meeting of the Durham County Council. It says 10am, it's now 10:03, I get told off sometimes, my slight tardiness, but this isn't my fault this time, we're just waiting, we're just waiting, anticipating, as the song goes, for the actual feed to start. "Maybe there's been a fight, maybe, who knows, who knows." "Morning all, ad infinitum", says Scott. Rosie, hello again peeps, just been beamed over. "Auto switch and laugh". "Who's the bloke in the hat? Has he ever been abroad?", asked Alan Jackson. I got really interested, before we get started, I can see it on the other screen, so I'll tell you when we need to go over there. But I've got a friend who is very, 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 very well travelled, not quite as well travelled as me, but you know, getting there, absolutely getting there, and he was telling me, well, he sent me, he did an FOI request for when he was taken into custody, pretty much every time he returned to the US since 2007, and we're talking pages and pages of descriptions of him, his attitude, what he had in his backpack, where he'd been, lists of countries he'd been to, and this was many, many incidents over many years, pretty much every time he got back to America, after visiting other countries around the world, in Africa, Asia, etc, he will get pulled aside and they would spend two and a half hours quizzing him where he'd been, what he'd been doing, and he was, he is a US citizen, he's, you know, he's, he's done nothing wrong, but I find it absolutely fascinating that the Americans are so paranoid that like, people going to other countries is a reason to detain you when you get back into, on American soil, and he's a lawyer, so he was just like, no comment, no comment, no comment, all the time, and that pissed them off even more, but it got me thinking like, I never, ever, ever, ever have been questioned on my way back into the UK, have you? Let me know in the chat if that's happened to you, you know, whether you've been somewhere, you've been to Cuba, or you've been to North Korea, or you've been to Afghanistan, or Iraq, or Iran, have they looked in your passport and gone, oh, why did you go to Iran then? Explain, because that didn't happen to me, do you know what happened to me? I got invited to go on the BBC breakfast couch, do you know what I mean? I wasn't, I wasn't told, I wasn't taken aside to a little room, I mean, they didn't ask me at the airport, wouldn't have been the airport for the odd expedition, but you know, they didn't ask me when I came over on the ferry from Europe, from mainland Europe, but still, scary. Anyway, here we go, the Watch Party feed has started, I will turn the volume on so we can hear what is happening, great, great shot that, great angle, thanks for that, it's mostly, mostly table, mostly back wall, there's no sound at the moment, that's not my fault, there just is no sound, we will see if we get sound in a moment, we might, in the meantime, I'm going to say thank you to Yori for the £2 super chat, good morning Graham, the glorious chat, and also to Ori and Yori, Ori, thank you very much, super chat to set the stream off, and also Azina has joined us, so welcome, welcome to the channel, Azina, you are awesome. Still no sound, still no sound, okay, I'm just gonna check on something to make sure this isn't my fault, there's no sound.
Sadness, I have to formally report the death.
Oh, oh, here we go, okay, no, we do have sound, we do have sound, okay, so we're gonna go to...
It is with sadness being broadcast live to our YouTube channel.
Oh, there we go.
Before we commence with today's formal business...
So the sound's on.
Could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off their mobile phones or make them silent?
Switch off your mobile phones, you bastards.
And all other electrical devices.
Okay, I've sped it up a little bit because we're a couple of seconds behind there, so fix that.
It is with sadness, I have to formally report the deaths of Alderman Malcolm Pratt, who served on Chester Street District Council between 1971 and 2003. Malcolm was one-time leader of Chester Street District Council and was an honorary Alderman, and we also said our goodbyes to one of our own, County Councillor at the time of her passing and former Mayor of the City of Durham, Councillor Mamie Simmons. Mamie served the former City of Durham for 10 years, from 1999 to 2009. Representing the Newton Hall Ward, Mamie was elected to the County Council in 2005 and served for 20 years, until her passing just a few months ago. Along with many others attending Mamie's funeral last month, and the numbers that turned out to say their farewells was touching indeed, she will be sorely missed. Before we move to the...
Oh, oh, okay, so just lost the feed for a second there.
Business on the agenda, I would like you to, sorry.
It's quite quiet.
Sorry, can we please stand for a moment silence?
Okay, I'm just gonna skip to ahead here, I'm sorry that might seem a bit disrespectful, but we were a little bit behind, so we don't need a minute silence. Let's have a look in the chat, all my subtitles, I think I can hear that, it's really quiet, it's very quiet, and unfortunately, we don't seem to be getting a very good feed at the moment, so there you go, oh, look, there's Crafty Wha. Okay, I've just been turning the sound up, hopefully it'll, shouldn't blast you, should be a bit louder now.
Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for this meeting. As with all council meetings, any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset.
Let me know if this is distorting for you.
Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would extend a warm welcome to the members of the press and public attending the meeting. We do have a large number of people in attendance today, and we have accommodated you as best we can. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, you should not disrupt the meeting. Before we move on to the election of Chair, can I also remind the council that speeches can be made on nominating the Chair of the Council only, all other nominations will be moved and seconded without speeches. Can I have nominations for the Office of Chair of the Council?
Yeah, could I nominate councillor Richard Bell, please? Richard's been here 20 years, he's got a wealth of experience, he can't be biased because he's only one person now, and I'd ask that everybody supports that, please.
Thank you councillor Shuttworth, that need a second. Thank you councillor. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to propose councillor Robbie Roddis, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll piss off your little Crafty, Crafty Wha.
I will hand over...
I'll turn my volume now.
Are there any other nominations?
Hopefully it's around the same level now, I'll turn them up, turn me down.
I will hand over to our head of legal services to explain the procedure.
Just let me know if this is okay for you.
Thank you Chair and good morning members, so we have two nominations in for the position of Chair of the Council, councillor Richard Bell and councillor Robbie Roddis. The team will load those names into the voting equipment in the order in which they appeared, so it will be one, if you wish to vote in favour of councillor Richard Bell, press two if you wish to vote in favour of councillor Robbie Roddis. There will be a buzzer sound that will indicate that vote is open, and I will confirm that the vote is open at that point, we will check to see that all votes are in before the Chair will announce that the voting is closed. Again, if anybody has problems with their handsets, please wave them in the air and a member of the team will come and assist.
Whether they have an impartial chair or whether they have a very partial chair on behalf of re-fuck, what do you think they're gonna vote for? You know, this is like banzai, isn't it? Vote now! Perfect sound now, thank you, oh cool, perfetto, says Doc 4x4, got there in the end. I'm kind of worried that someone's gonna come on the mic and their mic's gotta be on a normal level, I'm just gonna blast everyone's eardrums out, so sorry in advance if that happens, hopefully it won't. Oh, sorry, that was a bit noisy.
That's the vote open. Apologies members, I can't remember if I said if you wanted to abstain, it's number three, so it's one for councillor Bell, two for councillor Robbys, three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct your vote.
Don't tell Crafty to wave his handset in the air, Crafty's on the internet at the moment, yeah, man.
I'm here, I'm on the telly, I'm on the telly mum, mum!
Yori, thank you very much for the £5 super chat, speaking back to memories from when I ran for Newark Town Council, one year of council meetings and copious note takings, mind numbing but informative, thank you very much for the super chat there. So Alan Bell is an independent, apparently, can't get much more information about him, but he's in the independent group. Oh, Richard Bell, oh, okay.
We're going to close the vote.
Is it Richard or Alan? There's two bells. We can hear you, can hear you saying 27. If they can have electronic voting, why not in the Commons, because the Commons is just, it's a very silly place, let's never go there.
Councillor Richard Bell, 27, councillor Robbie Roddis, 62, abstentions four, councillor Roddis is elected to the...
So that's the re-fucker.
...both positions of Chair.
Richard Bell, sorry, he's not independent, he's a Tory, so is it a Tory or a re-fucker?
Can, does the council agree the election of councillor Roddis? Congratulations on your appointment, can I invite you to join us on the dais, please?
God, it's major misunderstanding from the viz.
I, Robbie Roddis, having been elected to the Office of Chair of the County Council, declare that I will take that office upon myself and duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability.
That was exciting. What a major misunderstanding there, wasn't it? I'm just trying to find some information about these gobshites.
Thank you, I would like to start by making the following quote, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" This is a very great honour and one of the best days of my life.
Making sure multimillionaires can get their multimillionaire bank accounts, so you know.
I know at times I will ask myself why I'm doing it, but like every other elected councillor in this room, I recognise that I want to do the best, very best for the people of County Durham.
No you don't, you wanna make sure that multimillionaires get posh bank accounts.
We don't do it because of some ego trip. Every candidate and every elected councillor who puts their heads above the parapet did so because they wanted to make a difference and improve the lives of the people in this lovely county. I reluctantly accept this role and thank everyone who voted for me.
He's gonna bring down the gap between the re-fuck and the super voter.
I also understand why others didn't vote for me, but that's democracy, and democracy is a very precious thing, but it's never easy to steer away through its demands. Everyone holds an opinion and a viewpoint, and everyone has a right to be heard. So I would ask for patience and remind everyone, both in this chamber and outside in the county, that we will make mistakes, it's inevitable, but if and when we do, it will be with the best intentions and not for some political or financial gain. Finally, I would ask that whilst in this chamber, I expect everyone, irrespective of their political party, to remember that it costs nothing to be polite and less to be magnanimous in defeat, so I thank you again, thank you.
I'm on the Durham County Council website, doesn't tell you much about his background there. We do need e-voting in the Commons, why has this stopped? Why has it stopped? What has happened? Oh, this is fun, isn't it? Let me just take you over here to make sure that's the problem with my monitor, oh, I think it's a me problem. Ruben222, thank you very much, we need e-voting in the Commons, yes, yes, we do. I'm very sorry about this, but YouTube appears to have crashed, that's fun, isn't it? That's a fun thing to happen, love it when YouTube does a bit of crashing. Oh my god, I'm having a mare, I'm having a mare, oh, hang on, he's getting a medal, oh god, it's like the end of Star Wars all over again. Hang on, I need to take you back over to the feed. How come Chibi doesn't get a medal? Okay, since we just skipped a bit there, I'm gonna skip forward. I'm getting photos, me in the background, hello.
As incoming Chair, it is my first honour to pay tribute to councillor Nicholson and to councillor Joblin. Firstly, I would like to thank councillor John Nicholson for all the hard work and dedication she has given to this role as Chairperson of Durham County Council. I've been lucky enough to have known Joan for several years, and from the outset, I quickly realised that this was a woman who knew her business and could be relied upon for advice. When researching the role of the Chair, one role is to be the conscience of the council. That is not an easy role to accept, but Joan assured me she enjoyed it most of all, so that is a tribute in its own right to Joan to be called the conscience of an entire elected council and to actually enjoy the cut and thrust of debate. Usually behind every successful man, there is always a clever woman, but of course, the roles were reversed, and in Joan's case, she had the support of Robert, her consort. The title intrigued me, so I Googled the term consort, which stated that consort is usually the spouse of the reigning monarch. So between being described as the conscience of the council and the reigning monarch, what more can one say? As for Robert, on behalf of Durham County Council, I would like to thank him for his patience and support for the reigning monarch of County Durham. As for Patricia Joblin... I would like to say a huge thank you to the Vice Chair, most importantly, that is Patricia Joblin, British Empire Medal. Again, this title speaks volumes, Patricia has tirelessly served the people of County Durham and always maintained the very high standards of a public servant, she also makes an exceedingly good cake. So Joan and Patricia, I would like to say a very big thank you for you, for all your service, for your dedication and hard work and putting up with my questions now and again, so thank you again, thank you.
I don't know what's going on.
The Chair, probably that's me, will then invite the group leaders or their representatives the opportunity to pay tribute to the councillors Nicholson and Joblin, and I call on councillor Andrew Husband, first of all, to speak on their behalf.
No, Andrew, this is the new leader of the council, Andrew Husband, his name is...
Councillor Roddis has spoken in glowing terms of councillor Nicholson, Joan will be a hard act to follow, but I'd like to thank Joan not only for chairing a council of this size so very well, but also for the service to the council. Joan has worked tirelessly for the council and her community, and in many ways, we'll be entitled to take a well-earned break, however, they never want to rest, Joan was ready to take on the next challenge and was elected as Chair of Stanley Town Council at its annual meeting last week.
We need a Game of Thrones moment.
The community she represents on the town council, and indeed the town council itself, can be assured that they are in good hands.
Sorry, I need to fix some things there on the old feed.
I would also like to thank Patricia for her dedication to the role of Vice Chair, she has been an excellent ambassador for the council and can be rightly proud of her achievements within her local community, thank you.
I'm getting told that my mic's too low.
I now call on councillor Amanda Hopgood to speak.
Yeah, thank you Chair, and thank you Joan.
I'm gonna turn it up, can you hear me now?
You have been an inspiration for over two years to the people of County Durham in your role, you took over, over two years ago in the most awful circumstances, and you have held that office with dignity, with honour, and you've been a shining example of what the role should be for anyone following in your footsteps. You have shone County Durham to its highest level, whether it be with the King or whether it be with children in a school, you have been amazing, and more importantly, you have done it without any bias within this chamber, which is one of the key roles that that position holds.
Hopefully someone will ask what this guy thinks of his leader disappearing while his pet project was being discussed in Parliament.
Thank you to Robert for being by your side all that time, and for also having the patience of a saint, quite frankly, so good luck in the next chapter, and I for one, as will many people who have worked with you for the last however many years, will miss you immensely in this room, thank you.
I call on councillor John Shuttleworth.
Joan, you've always been there, you've always been fair, and I wish you well for the future, and so does all of the group here, thanks.
I don't know why it keeps going off like that.
Councillor Rob Crute.
Thank you Chair, and on behalf of the Labour Group, I'd like to record our gratitude to Joan and Pat for their service over the years. I've known both of them for a long time, if I'm not mistaken, we both go back to the first years, back in 2008, when we became a unitary authority, and often the way that Joan's led the council from the Chair over the past two years, and as Amanda says, under terrible circumstances after the passing of the present Chair at the time, councillor Beatty, she's been...
I don't think it's the John Shuttleworth, because he was a fictional character, also jilted John.
...that we've had have been virtually invisible, and I think that's largely down to Joan's understanding and the interpretation of the rules and standing orders of the council, but that schoolmarm voice and the steely gaze that helped put anybody back in the place...
I think it's Joan Shuttleworth.
So thank you Joan, and thank you Patricia, I wish you well for the future.
I think it's just the thick pitmatic accent.
Thanks very much.
No, no, it's John, it is John, the same John, councillor John Shuttleworth. There is a councillor, part of the independent group.
Thank you Joan, and also Pat, for all of your hard work in your term of office, you have both been a credit to the council, good luck and best wishes from Spennymore Independents, Spennymore Run Tuller, thank you.
Of course it isn't more, Ron. Everyone stop calling the kids 'gods'.
It now gives me great pleasure to present councillor Nicholson with the past Chair's Medal.
Yes, it is John Shuttleworth, not the John Shuttleworth, just another John Shuttleworth, he's on my phone here, that's him, councillor John Shuttleworth. Got to experience all the accents, indeed, pitmatic round here. The Macums, the Tacums, and the people round here are the Pit Yakers, Pit Yakers! Even Durham. Sorry Patricia, I haven't forgotten. Council business is as exciting as paint drying, I'm trying to be best, Yori, I told you it'd be boring. Chris Seab, breaking news, inflation has gone up from 2.6% to 3.5%, yeah, that's breaking news though, John, Chris, that was on the news this morning. Another John Shuttleworth, there can be only one, can't imagine remaking Highlander, but it's all John Shuttleworths. He's so awesome. I'm John Shuttleworth, no, I'm John Shuttleworth, I'm John Shuttleworth, so is my wife. It's funny to me to say, you're good work, I'm not giving any examples, might wanna start doing that to pressure the opposition. I prefer jilted John.
We now move on to item three on the agenda, item three, the election of a Vice Chair. Can I have the nominations for the Office of Vice Chair of the Council?
Chair, I propose councillor Jackie Teasdale.
Oh, I got, oh, Vice Chair.
Chair, I second Jackie Teasdale.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Can you please show themselves?
Who is that? Says Tim Davis. What, John Shuttleworth?
Does the council agree to the election of councillor Teasdale to be Vice Chair of the County Council? Councillor Teasdale, congratulations on your appointment, can I invite you to join us on the dais, please?
Oh god, so she's another re-fucker. She is Delve's Lane Division. What we need to do is make a note of all these names and then check their social media and see what they've put in the past.
Oh, I need these on, right. I, Jackie Teasdale, having been elected to the Office of Vice Chair of the County Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability.
Oh shit, that's Crafty's mum, that's Crafty's mum, apparently, that is actually, yeah, so nepotism, reverse nepotism, starting already, where Crafty has, Crafty Wha has appointed his own mum as the Deputy Chair. Wow, yeah, Ronan's just put she's Darren Grimes' mother.
Just a few brief words, I would like to thank you for your support, and I look forward to being Vice Chair of Durham County Council.
Oh my god, she was like a paper candidate, she was a paper candidate, and now she's the Vice Chair. What a time to be alive! You know the plan to sell all of the libraries and the leisure centres and the gala cinema and theatre in Durham city centre to their mates, they're rich, well, well, well-heeled chums. Who is Crafty? Crafty is Darren Grimes, who was instrumental in the Believe campaign, which was found to have broken the law by the Electoral Commission in the 2016 fraud of Endem that left us in the... in the 2016 fraud o endem that left us in the dilapidated state that Britain is now in. Do you remember all that money we had during the last time Labour were in power, 1997 to 2010? Remember how all the city centres around the country got basically rebuilt from scratch? Because, you know, they finally got a bit of investment and then that stopped. Yeah, that was because of Brexit. That was because of people like these. She spawned that ball of smeg. That's one way of putting it, yeah. I'm just gonna skip ahead a little bit here because obviously she's just getting photos taken, which isn't that exciting. More clapping. Sit down. Sit down.
If we can move on to item four, which is the minutes. Can I have a mover and a secondere, please, to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 19th of March 2025?
Yes, he is an awful host and gambock news. Look at this guy's suit. Look what he's wearing. Look at who wears a suit like that? Who wears a suit jacket like that?
Item five, the declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on this agenda? No. We then move on to item six, which is the statement from the Returning Officer of the County Councillors, who were elected on the 1st of May 2025. And this statement is presented to the council for information. Can I ask the council to take note of it, please? Item seven, the Chair's announcement. Members, you will already have noticed that we will be taking some photographs throughout the course of this morning's meeting. The council photograph will be taken outside on the steps of the county hall at the conclusion of the meeting and will take between five and 10 minutes to organise. As always, I would ask that you be patient and it would be very appreciated.
Fifth-talent jacket, yeah, Harry.
As regards the charity, which I understand the Chair of the County Council has to agree to, I haven't taken a decision yet, but I'll obviously announce it very soon because obviously it's very important. And finally, I would like to take the opportunity to remind all councillors of their obligations under the Code of Conduct and members' responsibilities around registering disclosable pecuniary interests and other interests and declaring these at meetings where an interest is engaged. All members are required to complete a declaration of interest form, which is published on your pages on the council's website, and they must be completed by June 3, 2025. The Director of Legal and Democratic Services has covered declarations of interest as part of the members' Code of Conduct training. There is also an e-learning module available to members. If you have any queries in relation to your declarations, please seek advice from the Director of Legal and Democratic Services after the meeting. I would kindly ask you all to address each other in the correct manner during our meetings. And would also request that respect is shown from all sides of the chambers at all times. We request that it's a robust debate, it's part of a democratic process. But please respect the views of others. Do not point fingers during debate or anything of aggressive nature. It's not appropriate to shout at other councils across the floor during the debate. We all have a microphone, which allows everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking.
Oh, God.
I would ask that all councils remain in the chamber at the end of this meeting and stand whilst I am the Vice Chair. And the officers on the days.
This is riveting, says Alex Morgan.
At the conclusion of all meetings. Councillors are then free to leave the chamber.
You should all vote green.
However, as I said, today I would ask you to convene outside of the front of County Hall for a group photograph. Thank you.
Tactical voting.
We then move on to item eight, which is the Constitution, a report of the Director of Legal and Democratic Services, Morning Officer.
I'm glad you're watching this with me. Makes it so much more entertaining.
The Legal and Democratic Service present the report.
Thank you, Chair. It's a requirement of the council procedure rules that council approves the scheme of delegation insofar as it relates to council functions as set out in Article Four of the Constitution at its annual meeting. Accordingly, the Constitution is presented for approval today. There are no further proposed changes following those that were presented and agreed at the last council meeting on the 19th of March 2025. As set out at paragraph 10 of the report, adoption of the Constitution today does not prevent any further changes being presented during the course of the municipal year or as part of the regular annual review of the Constitution. The recommendations are at paragraph four to approve the scheme of delegation.
Yes, the reverse, that's what tactical voting means.
And note that I, as Director of Legal and Democratic Services, have delegated authority in consultation with the Constitution Working Group to make future changes to reflect decisions of the council or other council bodies, to reflect changes in legislation and to correct inaccuracies.
Can I ask for a mover?
A movie?
Move the Constitution, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Quinn. And a secondere?
Yeah, I'll second the Constitution, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Potts. Does any member have any questions regarding this report? No? Can I ask therefore that the council agree to the recommendations in this report? Item nine, to elect the leader of the County Council. Can I have nominations for the leader of the council, please?
Oh, God. So, this is going to be Andrew Husband.
Chair, I'd like to propose Andrew Husband, leader of the council.
Thanks, councillor Grimes.
Councillor Grimes. I mean, like.
Thanks, councillor Query.
Councillor Grimes. Could you sound like a baddie in a Batman movie?
Are there any other nominations for the leader of the council?
We've got to do something about councillor Grimes. Tough on Grimes, tough on the cause of the crimes. Grimes.
If the council agrees the election of councillor Andrew Husband as leader of the County Council.
Failed businessman.
Council. Oh, sorry. Is there no other nominations?
God, he doesn't know what he's doing.
Do we have an agreement?
Oh, my God, this is embarrassing.
Does the council agree to the election of the County councillor Andrew Husband as leader of the council? And therefore, I ask councillor Husband, congratulations on your appointment.
I ask? God. What, that makes no sense. Speak English, man. You're gonna go on about how English you are and how important it is to be English. Learn the language.
Item ten, leader's announcement of deputy leader and cabinet members.
It's Crafty Wa.
Can I invite the leader of the council to make this his announcement, please?
Crafty Wa.
Thank you, Chair. I would like Darren Grimes, sorry, councillor Darren Grimes, to be deputy leader of the council.
Does look like a haunted ventriloquist puppet, doesn't he, Darren Grimes?
Yeah. Councillor Husband, can we also have the other announcements for the Cabinet, please?
We're universe, it's not really the place to get into debate about this, but like, reform are gonna be even worse, like, to your family members. They're Nazis, they're genocides. Oh, my God.
Chair, I forgot my glasses.
He's forgotten his glasses.
That's the press's fault.
It's the press's fault.
I'll have to use my phone, I'm afraid.
Oh, my God.
I cannot see.
I cannot see.
Without further ado.
Come on.
We've got councillor Joe Quinn.
A do, a do.
Resources, Investments and Assets. Councillor Karen Allison, Neighbourhoods and Environment. Councillor Nicola Lyons, Stronger Communities and Belonging.
There goes Durham.
Councillor Cathy Hunt, Children and Young People's Services. Councillor Stephen Gray, Digital and Customer Services. Councillor Tim McGinnis, Rural Communities.
Someone's whispering the names to him because he can't read it. Probably because he can't read.
Councillor Howard Brown, Adult and Health Services. Councillor Lindsay Fox, Economy and Partnerships. Thank you, Chair.
Someone was whispering the whole time.
Lindsay Fox. Item eleven, appointments of council bodies and allocations of seats to political groups. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for the council to appoint the committees and the Corporate Parenting Panel in accordance with the Constitution.
Corporate Parenting Panel.
And to determine the allocation of seats amongst the political groups and unaligned councillors on the council. Paragraphs five and six of the report set out the legislative requirements in relation to the allocation of seats and the principles to be followed when allocating the seats. But in summary, those principles are that not all seats are allocated to the same group, that the political group having a majority of seats should have a majority of, on each committee or subcommittee, and that the number of seats allocated to each political group bears the same proportion to the total number of seats as the number of members of that group bears to the membership of the full council. And that subject to those principles, seats are allocated on each committee or subcommittee in the same ratio as exists on the council. It's also a requirement that councillors unaligned are taken into account when calculating the proportional representation. Paragraphs eight to 10 of the report set out how the distribution of seats is being calculated and the determination has been subject to the general principle of rounding up and down so as to be able to give effect to the principles in section 15 of the Local Government and Housing Act 1989. Appendix two sets out the schedule of committees in the Corporate Parenting Panel and the proposed distribution of seats. And appendix three sets out the composition of the Health and Wellbeing Board. The recommendations are set out at paragraph four to the report.
Can I have a mover for this report, please?
I move the amendments.
Thanks, councillor Lyons. And a secondere?
Secondere, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak regarding this report? Councillor Hopwood?
Thank you, Chair, and apologise in advance for breaking your first rule, but I would just like to congratulate councillor Husband on becoming leader of the council and wish him and his cabinet well. Thank you.
First rule, the first rule. What? Graham, are all the re-fuck councillors white?
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak regarding this report?
I think so. Durham is a very white place, I've got to say.
So, does the council agree to the recommendations detailed in this report? Right, we move on. Item 12, it's the appointment of Chairs and Vice Chairs.
Pun's a never torture.
Committees and subcommittees listed on the agenda.
You have fun.
I will invite nominations for the Chair and Vice Chairs for each committee and each subcommittee in the order that they appear in the agenda. Come, sorry. Can I have a mover, please?
He's having, the Chair is having to be told what to do because he doesn't know. He hasn't done any homework.
So, just to clarify what's been moved and seconded there, you should have all received a list of nominations that's been circulated around the chamber.
She's the real person in control of this, because she's telling him, like, you've got to do this, you've got to do that.
Um, required to be filled, so they have been moved and seconded.
This is like an idiot just taking over, a bunch of idiots taking over your company with no experience of working in the company or that field ever.
Do we have any other nominations for these roles?
Chair. Chair. Hello. Councillor Martin of North Lodge in Chester Street. I'd like to move an amendment that for Chair of Scrutiny, Mark Wilkes is put forward to that, and that council, in order to maintain political balance, that John Cook is moved to Vice Chair of Environment and Sustainable Communities, please.
Can I just clarify, when you say Chair of Scrutiny, you mean Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board?
Yes, that is clear.
That is clear, it wasn't clear.
So, we will treat that further nomination as an amendment to the table as circulated, and we will put it to the vote. If you are in favour of changing the Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board to Mark Wilkes and moving the Vice Chair of Environment and Sustainable Community Scrutiny Committee to be John Cook, it will be one to yes. If you are against that amendment, it's two. Three will to be abstain. And of course, if you wait for the buzzer, we'll confirm when voting is open.
We require a secondere for that amendment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillor David Freeman, Elvira Giles getting shinkled for it. I'd wish to second that motion, and I thought we'd get round to that at some point this morning.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chair, and well done.
People who don't believe in the environment, don't believe in having clean air for our children to breathe, don't believe in a shared future for humanity.
So, that's the vote open. If you're for the amendment, press one. If you're opposed to the amendment, press two, and it's three to abstain.
Durham has, what, six MPs? I don't know. We need a Led By Donkey screen to drop. That would be immense. That would be amazing. I think it's possible, though. I could do with some better camera kit. This feels very standard definition. Then again, do we want to see them in crystal clear 4K? I'm not sure we do. So, they're having a little vote at the moment over changing the person in charge of the environmental scrutiny to someone called John Cook. Press your buttons now. Yeah, indeed.
We'll close the vote.
For the amendment was 30, against the amendment was 63, abstentions zero. The amendment falls. Are there any other nominations?
Wow. I'm guessing there were 63 of all the re-fuckers. Damn. The re-fuck have got a super majority. So, apparently Lindsay Fox, who's on the Cabinet, she was kicked off.
So, as regards the nominations.
Spennymore Town Council for non-attendance.
Obviously, the amendment fell, so does the council agree without a further vote on any of the roles? Do we have to go through them all?
My God, do your homework, mate. He's turned up to chair this meeting, and he's not got a list of things he puts in of how he does stuff.
Item 13, appointments to joint bodies and other bodies, 2025, 2026. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to agree the appointments to joint bodies and other bodies to which the council is invited to nominate representatives. The details and criteria for nominating to the different bodies are set out from paragraph four onwards in the report. However, in summary, I'll take each one in turn. For the Combined Fire Authority for County Durham and Darlington, the membership comprises 21 members from Durham County Council and four members from Darlington. To reflect the size of the electoral representation from each authority and the seat allocations are set out at appendix two are a reflection of the political balance across the two authorities. The Business Durham Advisory Board acts in an advisory capacity to provide a partnership of private sector and political membership to inform the council's business support function within the Regeneration Economy and Growth Service. Since July 2021, membership has been agreed as the leader, deputy leader and cabinet portfolio holders for Economy and Partnerships, Housing and Assets and Neighbourhoods and Climate Change, with the leader from the largest opposition group and the ability for them to have a named substitute. It's proposed that this membership remains unchanged or acknowledging that there have been some slight changes to the names of portfolios as referenced in the leader's statement under item 10. With regard to the Charter Trust for the City of Durham, the Charter Trust was created on the abolition of Durham City Council to enable Durham to retain its city status. Members eligible to be Charter Trustees were the councillors from the areas comprising the former Durham City electoral divisions. As a consequence of the local government boundary review in 2013, the former Durham City divisions were abolished. Eighteen members from eight divisions wholly within the original Charter Trust area were appointed as Charter Trustees. were appointed as charter trustees, as well as councillors from a further four decisions, divisions, which were partly within the original Charter Trust but extended beyond it. And representation from those areas was determined on the proportion of the electorate paying towards the Charter Trust precept and where there was more than one councillor in a division who had received the highest number of votes at the last election. Following the Local Government Boundary Commission review between 2022 and 2024, the divisions have changed again.
How many councillors actually bother turning on?
The Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government has confirmed that they do not consider that the recent changes to boundaries impact on the Charter Trust arrangements. It's therefore for the council to determine appointments to the best fit of the original composition. Using the same principles outlined previously, the members representing electoral divisions wholly within the original charter trustees would become charter trustees. There are now six areas partly within the original charter trustee boundary and it's proposed to make appointments from these divisions on the basis of the updated average elector per councillor ratio following the recent boundary review. So the number of elected, if the number of electors paying the precept to the Charter Trust is between one and 3,991, one councillor would be appointed. If the number of electors is between 3,992 to 7,983, two councillors would be elected. And if it's the number of electors contributing towards the Charter Trust is over 7,984, three councillors would be elected. Where there are more members than there are positions, again, the councillors with the highest number of votes in the election would be appointed. The Charter Trustee Regulations 2009 make provision for the appointment of three additional councillors as charter trustees. In 2009, the cabinet determined that the additional trustees would be the Chair of the council if they weren't already a charter trustee by right and a cabinet member plus another councillor nominated by the leader. Since May 2021, the administration chose not to appoint the additional trustees. However, it's a matter for the new administration as to whether they wish to appoint them. And on that basis, the proposed allocations are set out in the report at appendix three. For the Durham Police and Crime Panel, that's a joint committee with Darlington Borough Council again. The panel comprises seven representatives from Durham, three from Darlington and two independent co-opted members. Members of the panel must represent all parts of the relevant police area and political makeup of the two authorities. Accordingly, the proposed allocation of seats is set out at appendix four to the report. The Joint Audit Committee for the Police and Crime Commissioner in Police have a member appointed from Durham and Darlington councils. Historically, the county council's nominee has been the Chair of its audits committee and again, it's proposed that this custom continues this year. With the North East Combined Authority, or NECA, council is required to make a number of appointments to NECA, which was established in 2024 covering County Durham, Gateshead, Newcastle, North Tyneside, Northumberland, South Tyneside and Sunderland. Each constituent council is required to appoint one member to the cabinet, which is usually the leader, with two named substitutes to attend cabinet in the leader's absence.
This is kind of boring, so I'm just going to turn it down. There is, there is a councillor called Pete Malloy, Malloy, sorry, Pete Malloy, and he's ex-BMP. He's an independent, but he's ex-BMP. You can Google him, there's some very unpleasant things that he has said and done. Anyway, back to the.
Report refers to other bodies from paragraph thirty onwards and the proposed arrangements for appointing to those where the council is invited to nominate members. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph three to the report.
Can I ask for a mover to the recommendations, please?
I'd like to move the recommendation.
Thanks, councillor Husband.
Doesn't know what he's doing. He needs to clarify whether he's appointing additional.
Regarding, item three, bracket C, regarding the Charter Trust.
That doesn't mean anything.
Sorry, Chair, just for clarity, so the intention is to appoint to the three additional trustees.
May I have a second to the recommendations removed by the leader of the council?
This is like a kindergarten!
Thank you, councillor Grimes. Does anyone have any questions regarding this report?
Apologies, unfortunately, my internet connection has failed, so just for completeness, it's my understanding that the three additional trustees to be appointed are councillor Roddis as Chair, councillor Nicola Lyons as the member of the cabinet and there was a third member. Thank you, so it's those three additional.
Can we have a second, please, to this?
Oh gosh, he's having to tell him all the stuff that they have to do. Have you turned your mic off when you're telling him what to do? That needs to be seconded. Can we get a second there in there?
And item fourteen, which is the dates of the council meetings. Can I ask the council to agree to the suggested dates of the council meetings for 2025, 2026 as printed on the agenda? Thank you, thank you. That concludes today's business and thank you all for attendance.
Oh, there you go. That's it, it's over. I can go and have some breakfast now, very quickly. Because very soon I'm going to have to go and get get ready for PMQs at 12 o'clock. So we're going to have a watch party at 12 o'clock, PMQs. Okay, so that was first of all very boring and also very dispiriting because it was clear like all the way along that none of them, the council leader, husband, husband and the Chair, Robbie Roddis, they didn't know what they were doing. They had to be told all, they had to have the hand held all the way through. And like, if you're a new councillor, fair enough, do you know what I mean? Like, but these are people who are like, the Chair, the leader, the deputy leader, why are they having to have the hands held through this? Could you imagine if, in Parliament, if there was someone next to the Chair telling him, oh, you, you, you you need to, there's a point of order coming up, you know, you need to. Or like whispering the name of the MP that they're going to call in, in Prime Minister's Grace, I don't know. It just reeks of unprofessionalism. And, and look, these are, these are amateurs, like, they are because you don't get paid as a councillor. But still, do your homework. Why didn't that guy, Robbie Roddis, why didn't he have a list in front of him of what he had to do? Just a simple list, like written down on a notepad or something? They said, okay, I need to do this and then I need to ask this, I need to ask if there's any amendments. I need to ask if someone seconds, anything that's proposed needs a second there. He forgot about seven times in that, that they need a second there. I'm like, this is really basic stuff. This is really, really basic stuff and it just makes me think that these are unserious people. Unfortunately, unserious people in charge of a city council, or in this case, a county council, that can be quite serious to the people who actually live in the place. The silver lining of this is if we can show that these idiots just don't know what they're doing and what a mess they make of Durham, which I'm going to be, I'm going to be recording this. I'm going to be going out in my community and seeing what they're getting done or what they're not getting done. I'm going to be talking to people who's, who aren't getting the benefits that they should be getting. They aren't getting the services that they require because the council are just completely inept. And hopefully, if we shine a light on this, at least some sensible people, I say, are you sensible on the revisement, but you know, so at least some of the 27% of the population who are threatening to vote for re-fuck in the next general election, at least some of them will go, oh, actually, if we put them in charge, they won't know what they're doing. And then we'll just have what it was like 14 years under the Tories, where we just didn't have serious people in charge of the country. Anyway, Jeff says, it did appear to have a list. He either ignored it or the notes were not read in a crayon for him. And Skyler Jones says, well, that was thrilling. Indeed, indeed it was. Listen, thanks for watching. There's not another council meeting like this for another month, I don't think, so it'll be all right for a little while, but there will be PMQs at 12 o'clock today. Obviously Gaza and the new Brexit deal will be on the table for discussion. So please join us for that at 12 o'clock today. Watch party here on Politic Social. I've been Graham Hughes, you've been awesome. And until next time, hello, good evening, welcome and goodbye.